I'd like to call this meeting to order for the work session of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for February 9, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Jalka.
Here.
Leyland.
Here. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, the agenda received as proposed or amended?
So moved.
Seconded?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? The agenda is received. The budget work session, discussion on consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '24 Blackhawk County budget. And Michelle, will you be leading that today?
Well, maybe.
Another minute?
Yeah, sorry. I copied the link to my desktop and it's not working.
Madam Chair, I was just gonna say I've got another Zoom meeting that I'm gonna switch over to at 9:50 if we're not done with the work session by then.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
We could go ahead and start talking. Maybe it's easier to talk about the capital summary while I get this going. Share.
And did you talk with staff? Are they prepared to, like, address their particular items? Or how were you leading that?
I believe so. I think folks know that theirs are on there. I'm sorry, I just can't talk at this.
Is there anyone that would like to offer to go first? From those that have capital?
First one on...
Rory said he's going...
Now to start at the top of the list.
Rory said he's ready.
Yeah, we'd be fine to do that.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rory, here.
Not popping up. I've got a copy over here.
Okay, why don't you just, I think you just need to start.
Just go with it, okay.
I'm having a lot of problems right now.
All right, so I know we went through this list earlier, kind of quickly.
Yeah, appreciate some time on it if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll just kind of go down. What we did is we did rank the projects with priority, one being high priority, all the way through three. So I'm gonna start with the number-one priority items. First one is the fire alarm panel replacement here at the courthouse. We have $125,000 budgeted for that replacement. That would be replacing the panel itself and all of the field devices throughout the building.
And age, I assume, is the reason for that?
Age, inability to get parts. We did take a stab at it. We have a hard trouble on the unit right now, and we exhausted just about every avenue to try to correct that. And we're being told from multiple different vendors that with the age of that system, it's just, it's hit the end of its useful life.
Thank you.
So that's that one. The next one, actually, the next two, is x-ray machine here at the courthouse and a walkthrough metal detector. I have $42,000 budgeted for the x-ray machine and $30,000 budgeted for the walkthrough metal detector. X-ray machine will be very similar to what you currently see there now, but I did want to touch on the walkthrough metal detector, as Tavis had mentioned. You know, with our existing metal detector, it is very challenging for, say, someone that might be in a wheelchair to get through that. And so I do want to point out that the system that we're looking at is very similar to what the sheriff's department uses. It's a portable system. It's a pole, basically, that you set there, and it essentially would eliminate the need to have to kind of go through a barrier. So I do think it's gonna be a much improved system in regards to that.
And those have to be probably in tandem, I was gonna say, as far as the, or no?
Not necessarily. They're two separate pieces of equipment. We did purchase these existing ones at the same time. I do want to mention that with the x-ray machine currently, we are not under a service agreement as of right now. We chose not to pursue that, knowing that we would be potentially looking at replacing that.
Rory, is this funding, doesn't it come out of the sheriff's account?
I, you know, I was talking to Michelle about that the other day, and I believe that would come out of their room and board, but I guess I would let Michelle answer that one.
I think, I think in the past, that's, in the past, I think that's where that account paid for.
That's, that is not how the sheriff and building maintenance have it budgeted today. We can look at that as we go through the process. I don't, we just need to look at it.
It was in the past, though? It was just changed for this year?
I, Rory told me that yesterday. So possibly...
That is something we do need to work a little harder into. Typically, what I would do is sit down with the sheriff and go through projects that are related to the sheriff's department, and I believe in the past, most of those would come out of the room and board. So my guess would be that that would be the case here if the funding allows it. And I think that's what Michelle is going to look into.
Okay, for both those items. Gotcha. And the third one?
Yeah, and then the next one would be the washer and dryer, and that would be the same scenario there. You know, they have the existing system that's in there right now is, 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 we're starting to see more maintenance having to be done on that system, more downtime, and we really can't afford to have downtime when it comes to that washer and dryer. If you can imagine 272 inmates in there, that is a system that we need to keep up and running. So that is just another hit to end of its useful life.
Rory, again, in the past, that we've replaced that over the years, hasn't been paid through commissary funds?
I don't think commissary, but I want to say possibly room and board. I believe those are two different funding. But I believe you are correct as far as the room and board.
And we have the same issue there. That didn't get submitted through the jail, the room and board fund, but we will be looking at that.
The next one is our salt and sand spreader. That is a salt and sand spreader that goes in the back of our three-quarter ton pickups, just for managing our winter months and getting the salt and sand spreaded. We purchased one a few years back, and this would be a second one. We currently have two in service right now. One of them is showing signs of severe wear and tear, and so to be proactive, we just want to keep on top of that so we don't have downtime. Main entry door replacement over at the Pinecrest facility, fairly simple. I mean, it's just the entry doors there. Again, we're seeing an uptick in maintenance on those doors. They do get a lot of usage, and it's just kind of whittling away at our time, keeping them serviceable. So it's just replacing those. And looking at the handicap push button on the outside of that facility, that's another issue that we've ran into on that. Employee parking lot resurfacing, that would be for the courthouse main lot, the employee lot, and the jail lot off of Lafayette. And that's just a, you would mill that parking lot down and resurface it. We had that on a, on the long-term plan last year, and it's getting to the point where we're concerned with some of the areas that are breaking apart. We're just concerned for trips, slips, and falls. So just a safety issue. HVAC control upgrade. This is a little bit of a combined hardware and software, majority of it being a software upgrade to our head-end system that controls the HVAC at the Pinecrest facility. I did want to note that if we were to go through with the ARPA request for the remodel of fifth floor and the clinic on first floor, if that were to happen, this upgrade would, would fall into place with that project as well. It's something that we need regardless, but it isn't. I just want to make a note that even though, because the air handlers replacement was on that ARPA as well, this sets us up for that upgrade at that building also, if that makes sense. Emergency exit stair replacement at Pinecrest. We've got one set of stairs over there, concrete stairs that are crumbling and just a potential hazard, a potential safety issue there. So what we would do is remove those and put a galvanized set of emergency stairs in its place. Security alarm replacement at Pinecrest, that is, that system we've had in there for several years. It's not reliable and just, just needs to be replaced. If you have any questions on these, go ahead and fire away. Sidewalk repairs at Pinecrest, we got a report from the city of Waterloo. We've got a couple of areas that need to be addressed. That's a pretty common item on our budget each year, is just maintaining our sidewalk. Water supply pressure relief valve, that is our main adjustment valve for adjusting our water pressure throughout the jail. We're being, we've noticed some leaks, and we've actually twice now have had to work on this valve, so we're just asking to go ahead and do a full replacement. Gutter and downspout repair at Pinecrest, just general maintenance. Caulking tuck pointing at Pinecrest, that one there is primarily the dormers on the fifth floor. Include having a lift going up, recocking all the external windows, and doing tuck pointing in that area. We did a big tuck pointing project about five years ago at Pinecrest, and this is just, I don't anticipate there to be a lot of tuck pointing in this project, but more so going through and sealing up all the windows. So a lot of that cost is gonna be just equipment to get up there. If, on fifth floor, some of you may have noticed, as you walk through the fifth floor, there is some spalling on the walls, and we're concerned that we are getting some seepage in through those windows. So we want to address the problem first, then come back through and correct the problem on the inside.
There was, I know, just walking through, there was some concern from staff there about some of the carpet and potential issues with moisture. Is that, obviously, the caulking and tuck pointing is first, but then is that on the radar to adjust?
Once we, we would do all of the internal repairs in-house, but we have to get this outside issue corrected, or else we're afraid that we'd go through, you know, the repairs on the inside and still end up with the problem. So this is just a step in the process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Rory, you said a lot of tuck pointing was done five years ago.
I believe it was about five years ago.
When was kind of the whole building, like, redone with the tuck pointing?
It, well, I guess I should rephrase that. That was a full-scale re-tuck pointing.
Okay.
Project. It was a very large project. So a lot of the parapet walls that you see on that facility, the caps, the, on there, were repaired. So it was pretty extensive. The reason I put tuck pointing on this is if we're gonna have a lift and we're gonna be up there addressing some caulking issues, I wanted them to go ahead and inspect the clock, the tuck pointing as well. So I put a little bit in there just to cover ourselves if we were to find an area that did need to be repaired.
And Rory, I'll, I'm gonna ask this every couple of years, but how's the condition of the historic awning on the Pinecrest building?
The condition with regards to, you know, back when we did replace that, we had some holes in it. So that part of it is okay, but I did notice it needs a very good power washing, just a good cleaning. But as far as the structural part of it, it actually isn't in too bad a shape.
Okay. Well, it's just a cool historical feature on our oldest building, and I want to make sure we protect it.
Absolutely. Yep. Next item is the electrical service replacement here at the courthouse. That is gonna be a very large undertaking. Our existing switchgear that we have for this facility, they no longer make that particular type of switchgear. Our fear is, is that if we did have something go out, obviously, we could adapt and overcome potentially by getting a retrofit replacement breaker, but it does pose a challenge, and we just want to be able to eliminate any potential downtime. So what we're proposing is a full-scale replacement of that equipment, and then we would also be looking at our electrical junction boxes throughout the facility as well and doing some upgrades there. We would be looking at some of the floor tombstones, we call them. It's the outlets that you see popping out of the floor. We'd be, we'd be cleaning some of that up because what we've found out over the years is you have several things tied to those. So if you just simply go and remove them, you're probably gonna be impacting something else down the line. So what I would like to see at the end of this project is to have a very good one-line diagram of our electrical system. So moving forward, we can diagnose problems and just really help us out. Yep. Reepoxy, some showers over at the jail. I believe it was probably back in 2012, we did a very large upgrade to the showers over there. We had a company come in, we epoxied, I think it was 32 or 36 showers in that facility. What we're noticing on a few of them are starting to, some of that epoxy is starting to break away. So this is simply a repair, having, going through each of those showers and making the necessary repairs so we don't see any more erosion on those.
That's going through all, but just, and just those that need?
And focusing on the ones that need addressing. Overhead door replacement, that's over at the jails. Well, that is in our loading dock, and it's just over the years, the salt and sand has done a toll on it, and it potentially could be an unsafe situation. So that's just replacing that overhead door. Security grading for balconies. It says balcony. It's the second upper-level deck in the pod areas, in a few of the pod areas at the jail, and this is a safety issue. This is securing the upper deck from, somebody from slipping, falling off of that deck, jumping off that deck, what have you. So this is a security issue. And then we've got our priority-two projects. We've got a new one-ton pickup with plow. This is just our cycling through our fleet. We did have a pickup on last year, or on this year's budget, but we chose to move that, just given the situation with vehicles this year. So we're just asking for it again in this next upcoming budget.
Was it approved last year?
Pardon me?
Was it approved last year?
It, it was. It was. And we did reach out to a few of the dealerships, and as I think had been discussed in the past, it is very difficult to get those vehicles in a timely manner. So we figured we would stand by and see if pricing comes down, see if we can't do a better job this year. Patio sidewalk at Pinecrest, I think Alondo touched on that a little bit. That is right behind the VA. That would be taking what used to be the area where the playground equipment was when it was a daycare, and putting concrete, making concrete patio, just making it a little nicer for folks to utilize that area, as well as putting a sidewalk along the west side of that building to be able to go from the main parking lot to the back of that area.
Hey, Rory, I'd like to see that include, you know, an outdoor shelter of some sort, since they have so many events there. So I don't know if you could work with Alondo on something like that. But it might be a good thing to find out of reserves this year.
Okay. Yep, we can definitely look at that like, like a gazebo-type situation, but a little larger scale.
Yes.
Okay. Lawnmower replacement. We currently have one lawnmower. We have one property maintenance personnel, and there is a lot of ground to cover, and there we're just asking that we keep that equipment up and running. If we see any downtime, it is really pretty devastating to our department to try to get caught back up. So we're just asking for a new lawnmower. We have, we have factored in costing, not including a trade-in, and the reason for that is that would allow us to have a backup lawnmower if we kept our existing one. Number, priority number three, we did put in $20,000 to repaint the attorney's department in the lower level. We also have $3,800 in there, and this is something we have been talking about for a few years now, and that is upgrading our, updating our directory here at the courthouse, going digital. So if you can imagine, if you had a monitor down in the lobby that would be tied to somebody that would be designated to manage that, they could put up announcements, they could show, you know, one solar production, they can highlight certain events that we're putting on, and that's what that would be. And we'd also have one up here on the second floor as well. $10,000 to remodel the cafeteria, and what the idea there is, is to turn it into an employee break room. It would include a FOB system, so it would be just for employees. It would be demoing the existing equipment, putting that out on GovDeals, hopefully getting some money back from that. Be putting a new floor in there, probably a new paint job. The ceiling is in good shape. We just did that a few years back. So yeah, really, that would be just turning it into a place for our employees to be able to go, have a break, with the idea down the road, and a lot of people probably won't like this from me, but the goal would be to try to, try to start eliminating some of these makeshift break rooms that we have throughout the building and getting people to congregate in one area. That, that's, that's just my idea. It doesn't mean it's a good one, but...
Depends on who you're talking to.
Yeah. Power brush, I've got $3,000 in there. Just to explain that a little bit, that is a walk-behind brush. You've seen probably the brushes throughout town, cleaning off sidewalks, and most of the time you'll see those. They're, they're in a tractor or a cab or something like that. This is actually a walk-behind, and this is something that my staff brought to me to help us with some more of the detail work when moving snow and ice from the sidewalks. Over at Pinecrest has always been a challenge, if you're familiar with the zigzag sidewalk that, that goes from the lower lot up to the upper deck. That one can be very challenging in the wintertime when we have ice, and what the idea is, is this would get down to that concrete, bust up that ice, and, and just really allow us to do, you know, a better job on that detail work and try to avoid those, those slips and falls. If we recall, we did touch, we had the stair railing and door upgrade at courthouse, at the courthouse here. I did ask, Michelle and I talked, I did propose putting that on more of our longer term to allow me to really dive into that one a little further, because I literally extracted that from our facility assessment, and I need to get my head wrapped around that one. So I'm not really asking for that for today, but I just wanted to bring it up to you that we will be pursuing that in the future, and we'll have a little more of a defined project for you.
So are you thinking it'd be like phased in, or it's just that you?
It could possibly be, very possible. If it's, if we're looking at the tune of a half a million dollars, we may look at starting with counters and then addressing stairwells. We do realize we do have some deficiencies in this building that need to be addressed, and we can do it a couple different ways. We can do it as a full sweep, we can phase it out, you know, we can, we can present it that way, a few different ways.
Do you have some identified that could be immediate?
Cost-wise, I do not. I'm not comfortable with the, with the cost that was presented through that assessment, and that's what I made the comment the last time, is I really need to get my head wrapped around that, because I, I don't necessarily think we're looking at that kind of cost just for doors and railings. I would like to do a full countertop, you know, if you imagine, let's take the recorders for an example, take a section of that countertop, lower that down to be ADA compliant, and that's just one counter. All of our counters are like that. So that's a pretty significant project. So that could potentially just be one on its own.
I just thought ADA has been an area we've really wanted to kind of focus on, and so, yeah, if we could start on that, that would be good. But yeah, I get it. You need more definition, maybe.
Yeah. The HVAC upgrades for the courthouse, we've got 1.4 million. That is going to be ARPA application, or ARPA request to the ARPA committee to be sent into the consultants, and we are currently working on that now. So just wanted to identify that today. So that really is, that's my list.
Hey, Rory, something I'd like to see us revisit this year is the landscaping around the courthouse and our parking lots downtown, and as was, was the jail. It's, and we've attempted, you know, we looked at doing, you know, trees in the parking lots before, but we didn't quite get that done. So I'm thinking that we should include something in this year's budget, and since this is a one-time, this can also be a reserve utilization. But we could put together a committee of, you know, maybe two supervisors and some folks from the courthouse to talk about, you know, just people that are interested in this, in this sort of thing. So, but I think that we could really utilize the space out front, you know, potentially have a more inviting, you know, outdoor space for, for our employees to utilize as well on breaks, as well as just, you know, be a part of, you know, really great transformation that's been happening downtown Waterloo, and, and celebrate the really great sculpture that we've had, and use that as kind of a bouncing point off of for the rest of the landscaping that, and such that we would do.
Sure. Yeah, I've actually had employees approach me with different ideas. You know, my, my capital, or my, my asking, my list got fairly large this year, and I kind of had to come to a stopping point, or otherwise I'd keep adding to it. But I can absolutely look into that. I wanted to share one idea that an employee brought to me, which I thought was a great idea, and in our existing plaza, putting some shade. If you can imagine, I believe over on 18th Street in Cedar Falls, Mulligan's has this really nice patio area with the triangular shade units, and that's kind of what I visualized out in our plaza here. And talking with this employee, we both agreed that, you know, that would be very nice, because we do have a lot of employees that like to go out to that plaza, and in the summertime, it can be pretty brutal. So, yeah, I can, I can absolutely look at something like that, if that's what you kind of had in mind.
Yeah, I think it's important to, even though, you know, architecturally, it's, it's not my favorite building downtown, but it is a really great example of mid-century architecture. And so we should, you know, you know, let that be part of what inspires our design, keep it, keep it appropriate to the building. keep it, keep it appropriate to the building, and that stuff is really in, and people really like it, you know, so it's.
I know a couple of years ago, the same subject came up, and the sheriff was a no on anything around the jail for the mere fact of security reasons.
Mostly tree, yeah.
Well, brushes, he didn't want any kind of bushes or anything where people could lay down behind him. He pretty much put an end to anything, because we were going to do something around there at that time.
Roy, we talked a little bit about, you know, counter boxes and those types of things. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we did, we actually had a fence on our list for this year to go around the main parking lot of the jail, on Sixth, adjacent to Sixth Street. Looking at the cost of it, I know it's going to be a chain link fence, it was going to be a block chain link fence, and you know, the more I got to thinking about it and what the cost was, I think we need to kind of go back to the table, and, because it is a pretty visible area, and chain link may not be too appropriate for that, so we kind of decided that we would take a harder look at that and come up with something a little bit more eye appealing. You know, unfortunately, we had a pretty nice looking fence there at one time, but when we had to take out that parking lot, the fence was sacrificed, so. And to, you know, what Tony had mentioned, we did have, we worked with a nursery company here in Waterloo, we had some concrete planer boxes, and we presented some different thoughts over the years, but yeah, that's, this is something we can definitely work on, and Chris, I don't know if maybe the space committee would be an appropriate committee to get together, you know, for something like this, or not.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. I happen to know the chair of that committee, so we can get something set up on that. It's me.
Good, easy to work with.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have, if nobody has any additional questions.
Roy, would you check also on that x-ray machine down there? First off, what they expect the life expectancy is, and second off, what kills us every year is the service agreement. The current one we got downstairs almost paid for, probably already has paid for a new one, it costs so much a month, so could you find out what a service agreement would be for that unit? This will be the third machine that I've gone through since I've been here.
Yeah. Unfortunately, when we were looking at this, those service agreements are, are pretty in line with what we've seen when we put this cost together, and I think just given the nature of that piece of equipment, the testing that has to be done on it, I'm assuming that's where, you know, it does take a skilled technician to make sure that we're not emitting any hazardous substance or things like that. So what I've, what I've seen as far as service agreements have been pretty in line, but what we would be focusing on is to try to, response time, because right now with the existing system, their, their response time is very poor. We're, we're a very small entity compared to what this very large company has to deal with, and it seems like we do get put on the back burner much of the time when we do have issues. So I guess I'm looking for more of a local, not necessarily in the Cedar Valley, but this company that I've got my number from is out of Chicago, Rapid Scan is in New York, so it does get us a little closer in the Midwest. So, yeah, I can definitely, the age of it, I had it written down, I didn't bring it with me unfortunately, this one here.
But you don't know what a service agreement's going to be on the new one?
It's, it's going to be about four thousand dollars a year, it's pretty similar to what Rapid Scan was. And that's, that's pretty common for those pieces of equipment, unfortunately. That one is a painful one that we have to address every year.
What, how long we've had this one, you remember? Because we had the old one on the other side of the building when we were doing remodeling.
Yeah, give me one second here, I may be able to find it.
I believe that was about, what, twenty-six thousand, twenty-eight thousand?
Okay, we, we purchased the existing one back in two thousand and twelve, and the cost on that was twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Yep. Thank you.
Back to, I think maybe your question, Linda, on the fire alarm panel, now that I found this document, that was two thousand and one, the existing one.
Thank you. So it sounds like you have, there are some other questions to address that you need to get back to us on, that we talked about earlier, regarding where the funding comes from, as well as, yeah.
Well, the other thing too, Roy, I was going to break up, I know in the past, the county attorney's office has paid for their remodeling down there through their collection fund that he has. Have you addressed that with him on that painting of the office?
I have not, no.
And you will.
I certainly will, though.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we'll skip around a little bit, I'm going to go to, probably at the very end of this file.
It's pricey, but it's short. And again, our submissions were forty-five thousand per vehicle, including civil and investigations, so those numbers aren't accurate, because the civil and investigations are all pursuit rated now. So the accurate number is two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the five vehicles. I'm going to bring Mark up to talk about vehicles here in a second, the in-car computer and video replacement, we are out of warranty on our in-car video. Those sync with body cams, that's a three-year warranty, that's also out, and we currently have a problem. The company that we are using is called Mobile Visi, or I'm sorry, WatchGuard, and WatchGuard was just recently purchased by Motorola, and as soon as it happened, I told Mark, I said their, their business model is to start virtualizing, start putting things into the cloud, and start charging you monthly to have access, much like Axon, much like what Waterloo is doing. I said, you wait and see what they're going to do, and sure enough, that's what they did. So we are actively looking at the possibility of jumping ship, getting away from WatchGuard to something else, and Mark's currently working some contracting and potential RFPs for another video system for our body cam and investigative interview rooms and vehicle dash cams. Obviously, bulletproof vest replacement, we talked about, we do a fifth at the department every year, so that those vests stay in warranty, so God forbid anything happens there, and like I said, I'm going to bring Mark up to talk about the vehicles that are slated for FY twenty-four, he can talk mileage, he can talk some of the mechanical issues that we're working with on some of those vehicles that are in need of replacement.
Tony, what's the quantity on the vests? Just?
It's a fifth at the department, we have a total of a hundred and forty staff members, but we replace two SWAT vests and, what, Mark, twenty-five vests? Twenty to twenty-five vests?
I think it's ten.
Ten?
We have the vest for two, that's one.
Maybe you see the less of that?
Okay.
About the thirty thousand is for the ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we do ten traditional vests, and then shop around on that. We don't all carry the same vest anymore, because it's whatever, we can get the lowest price or the same threat level.
But approximately thirty.
Yeah, and then the SWAT vests are much heavier, rated for a different caliber than that. On vehicles, the vehicles that we're currently cycling out, the first one has a hundred and thirty-six thousand miles on it, the second has one fifty, the third one has a hundred and thirty-five, the next one has a hundred and forty-five, and the other one has a hundred and sixty-one thousand. As you'll recall back quite a few years ago, the county decided to do this capital replacement program that we cycle them out proportionately per year. Prior to that, we didn't have a five-year plan, and we didn't have a capital project plan, and so some years we would get rid of two vehicles, and then one year, I think it was either fourteen or sixteen that needed to be done, and that creates real difficulty for the person trying to do the budget. I think, Tom, if you, I don't know if you remember, I think that was back in two thousand and four, two thousand and six that we did that? Anyway, it's been twenty-some years.
Yeah, we started in two thousand and six, we did a lease program with a company down in Texas.
And then eventually you bought them out on that.
We bought them out eventually.
We could incrementally get into this. So I know that you're going to have a tough budget year, as we look at capital and what to, what to fund and what to cut, I urge you real caution in cutting the capital on the squad car replacement program, so that in a few years down the road, we don't end up in the same place and then need ten cars. The cars that we'll replace next year currently have ninety-six thousand nine fifty-three, the second one has a hundred and nineteen three oh eight, the third one has ninety-five nine six two, the fourth one has a hundred and thirty-four nine fifteen, and the fifth one has a hundred thousand nine sixty-six. When we, currently with vehicle acquisition, COVID kind of changed that of how we've historically done that in the past. The years, the vehicles that we're getting currently aren't in, and we ordered those last May. Those should be coming and be on hand sometime within the next four to six weeks, is when we'll be cycling those out. For FY twenty-four, we'll have to be placing those orders in May in order to hopefully have those next January through March, but again, this, the supply chain with respect to vehicles is more difficult than it's ever been, and I don't want us to get into a bad position with that. With respect to the body cameras, I know that the sheriff addressed that, as he said, the current ones are about five years old, the video cameras are coming out of warranty right now. This IT and technology, it's tough to stay ahead on this stuff, because the body cameras, they had, came with a three-year warranty, they were fairly reliable during that three years. The last couple of years, we've had some real difficulty, and they're only five years old. Yesterday, I was on a call with two other deputies, both of those deputies had their body camera malfunction during the investigation. So with respect to funding those as a continuation in capital, I think that's also important. As a side note, we have had some conversations with AL, with whether there's eligibility to do that under ARPA, or if we're able to, that would be probably beneficial for the county, however, it's the same thing, if we do it, and maybe do it for a year or two, at some point you may have to put that back in the budget to keep us on. How we currently do this?
I think in general, we need to avoid using, you know, ARPA dollars for ongoing expenses that the county already has, and that was, that was even part of the original guidance on the use of those dollars, that we are, we're not supposed to use them for things that were already going to be included in budgets.
Okay. I sure, I sure understand that, I just know that you guys may be in a tough position this year, and if you were to do that, I'm just urging not to, you know, let's stick with the five-year plan though, either which way.
And does that policy probably need to update a little bit? I mean, five years is a long time on some of that sort of hardware.
So maintaining the status quo, Davis, we've been pretty effective on that, but going to six years may be unreasonable, if we try to stretch us out.
No, I was talking about the other way, the other direction. If we, if we've got, if we've got cameras failing.
Yeah.
I have to update my phone every two years.
Yeah.
Right? Technology, it's, it's created.
It's frustrating.
But it is, it is created in order to replace, that's where we're at now. So maybe a five-year timeframe doesn't make sense for us anymore. It might have made sense for us before, but maybe we need to look at a three or four year, so that we don't have equipment that's coming out of.
Yeah, we're, we are, we're feeling the pain on it.
Yeah.
And that was three-year warranty usually, is that true?
The body cameras came with the three-year, and we noticed that three years.
Yeah. Quick question on the, on the vehicles.
Yes.
I'm assuming we sell those once we're done with them.
Yes.
And so there is some dollars that come back to offset?
Correct. Now typically, we don't get much on these vehicles. They are law enforcement vehicles, the buyers know that they're law enforcement vehicles. We do take good care of them, but, but they're, they go through the trenches.
Tell us what we average get, Mark?
Well, it kind of depends on what type of vehicle we're trading out. Right now, I think we're averaging about forty-five hundred on the Ford interceptors that we've been trading out, somewhere around four thousand for the Dodge Chargers, give or take. One, we had those Tahos, those were more up in the eight thousand dollar category, and three of the new vehicles that we've got coming are, are Tahos. We went away from the Tahoe because Ford and, Ford and Dodge were substantially beating Chevy on the government rebates, and they were significantly cheaper. This year, Chevy kind of re-entered the law enforcement, they've been making the pursuit rated vehicles, they just weren't competitively priced. This year's Chevy on the SUV beat both Ford and Dodge, so we switched back to the Tahoe coming.
And you mentioned the body cams and that equipment, I was going to say, what's the number that we were purchasing them?
So I think we have, currently have about forty-four body cameras, and then right around twenty-two in-car video cameras, and then our evidence, our interview and interrogation room cameras are also incorporated into that same platform.
But that isn't what's on the capital right now, right, to replace all that?
No, we, we do that incrementally along with the, the computer that goes in the squad car. So we kind of jump back and forth of what we need to replace out of that.
So there should be five in-car video, the twenty-five thousand gets five sets of that?
No. So when we, the last time we did this with WatchGuard, the board expended one capital purchase on that, and then we also got money from gaming as a match on that, and I think that Black Hawk County Gaming gave us a hundred thousand. Now, what we replaced all that twenty-five is the laptop, and then what we've currently been replacing out of that is a body cam, we had two body cameras go bad yesterday. Those come in, I think around eight hundred to nine hundred apiece, that'll probably need to be replaced, and then we need to take that out of there to replace them.
So while we identify on this sheet as the quantity of one, this is actually a, kind of a bulk?
That's true, yeah. And with respect to the squad car computers that we replace out of that, what we're replacing right now are Windows Seven computers, most of the programs, for example. Most of the programs, for example, some of the programs that we run on there through the state system, there are no updates for Windows 7.
Correct.
Kind of phased out. And then the new programs that they need to run are only compatible with Windows 10 and 11. So we truly got every bit of life to be lived out of those computers. And it's time, you know, they're, they're no longer functional for the need. So when we get the new car, we replace the computer with it. Does anybody else have any questions that I can answer with respect to that?
Can I make a remark real quick? Supervisor Schwartz, regarding the ARPA, why I recommended the ARPA as a possible funding source is with the body cameras, if you, if depending on which system they get, it potentially will replace every single body camera. So while yes, it probably has some reoccurring costs, it will pay for that initial setup fee and all the equipment on the first go. And then from there, it's still, to me, that's still a cost savings because you're not paying that giant bulk of the cameras. Because you're talking, what, 50 cameras times whatever they're going to potentially cost and so.
If we did it all in one false, we'll put the warranty again.
Sure.
We're looking roughly 450, 450,000.
So that's why I recommended ARPA for that type of funding because of the giant lump sum.
Would you mind probably sending us an email saying that? I was going to say because Chris had mentioned he'd be off at 9:50.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we're five after. So I just meant so that he'd have that information would be helpful.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And so with that.
I'm going to.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
I'm zooming in on my phone to the other meeting so I can stay in.
Did you hear his comments then?
Yes.
And so one of the things on the ARPA funding, we do have to look into eligibility on that. Some of Al's IT-related stuff, there is a path on this. And we're being told that there's already been a path cleared. But we need to find that out for ourselves and not through some other department. So, so Al's going to work on that with us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to tackle conservation next, please?
Good morning. Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation.
Morning.
So start down through our capital list then. And like I did the other day, the, the elephant in the room is the Casey Lake restoration. I mean, that's a huge number. And it's typically something, you've seen these huge numbers in our capital before. And again, I, I always go back to the Wolf Creek Bridge. Normally something we've done on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. But you see these numbers and there's always reimbursement involved because of grants that we have gone after and different things like that. In this particular case, that 570,000, there would be no refunds or there'd be no money coming back. This is the construction phase, beginning the construction phases of the Casey Lake restoration. Therefore, with the DNR, with this whole process, when we started out with engineering, we, the county, put up, put the money upfront. We were reimbursed by the DNR or the state of Iowa, 75%. So our budgets would show expense and revenue coming back in. But when we, and we were aware of this, we were told this by the DNR, when we enter the construction phase of the project, it reverses. The DNR or the state puts up, puts all the money upfront. And then we are invoiced and then we have to pay back our 25%. So the projections for FY '24 would be that they could, our 25%, there would be almost, I don't know, I can't do the math in my head really quickly, but it'd be over $2 million worth of construction done in FY '24. And 25% of that would be on us. Okay? Now, we did, we're, we're looking for other funding sources. We're looking for granting sources and different things like that, like we do for, for all of these projects. This is the type of project that we're very limited as far as what's out there, what can we chase. We did submit a letter of intent to gaming. We were accepted and so we will be submitting an application. We're in the process of developing that application. And we're asking for $250,000 to help cover this cost. And again, we have no idea. I know they are, in our conversations with gaming, they have lots and lots of requests. And that's, and we understand that. So, you know, it's, it's a gamble when we do this and, and, but, but we're trying. The other potential might be REAP. We could try that. The only thing, we've got to ask some questions. Typically with these grants that you chase, your projects can't be started already. If construction starts right after the first of the new fiscal year, July 1, if any type of that construction starts to go, we cannot apply for REAP. That cycle will be in August. And so it may be a case where we would be ineligible to apply based on the fact that the project is already moving forward. We don't know that. We're going to ask that question. That would be another funding source, but those are about the only two that we know right now. We do, we are sending out feelers and checking with other people that there are a lot of lake restorations going on right now. And, and quite a few have been done with other county conservation systems. So we're asking those questions. The feedback we're getting is just about what I'm telling you. Not a lot of granting sources. So anyway, and then again, to add to this before I get off this, there would be construction costs next year. And it's estimated right now, with Shai Hattery being our engineer, their estimates are, it would be another 390,000 in fiscal year '25. So we're looking at about a million dollars, our share. But then keep in mind, we, we've already found 75% of the cost. Because this will be a little over, right around a $4 million project, maybe just slightly over that. So we have found 75% of the funding already. But I know this is a big, this is a big ask.
Mike, if the, if the REAP, if what's determined is we can't apply for the REAP wants, it's, which is pretty standard for REAP, is there any way to delay construction until that? Because, because August is the REAP application, so we'd be, we're only looking at a month, two months.
Exactly. Exactly. And, and you know, it's a possibility. I don't, I, you have to weigh the goods against the bads. If they're ready to go and the weather's right and they can get moving, it's hard to say, hey, can you hold up for just a little bit? But again, I think we need to do a little research and find out what, you know, what our options might be. We might be perfectly fine to go ahead. So I, but yeah, that's a tough question, Tavis. I don't have a great answer for that. What, what would be the best move there? You hate to delay what we've been working on already for, for, this is year four on this project. So we kind of hate to delay that. So, but, but I know it's, it's a, it's a big dollar amount. So.
But it's a great project. Great project. Yeah. The part that you're going to do next year, is that a separate phase with separate construction contract?
It, it should be basically the same construction phase.
I was going to say if it was a separate phase, maybe we could, it'd be better deal with the REAP that way.
Right. And, and this phase number one, where we'll start in fiscal '24, there will be what they call in-lake work happens after the fact. The first construction that they'll have to do is they have to create spoil sites. Because there has to be a place for the spoils that they're going to dredge out of the lake to go. And so the first part of the construction will be to develop those spoil sites at Hickory Hills on site. There will be two sites down there. Those sites will be, they will create 160,000 cubic yards, or they will be able to hold 160,000 cubic yards of material that will come out of that lake. They're estimating right now about 130,000 cubic yards to come out of there. They, they want to leave space for that. But that being said, we could view that as phase one, possibly. We can ask that question. And then when they start the in-lake work, which will be then, then we'll have to draw the lake down. It'll have to sort of de-water itself for the, for lack of better terms. And then, then they will go in and actually start physically removing that material. So there is that possibility, Michelle. We can ask that question.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking.
It definitely is worth, worth asking. So, yep, and we'll do that. So. But any other questions on the Casey Lake project? But it is a wonderful project. I know I heard somebody say it's a great project. It's something that has to be done. It's, it's, you know, lakes die. And we're avoiding, trying to avoid that. So, anyway.
And I think that Hickory Hills is a great, great asset that we have. We've, we've got it invested.
And Hickory Hills stays busy to begin with. I think after this is done, it's going to get even more busy.
Yeah, yeah. There will be improvements along the shorelines, fishing structures that will be put in to make fishing accessibility easier for people. And so, yeah, there are going to be some amenities that are actually going to attract more people, I, we truly believe anyway. So. Okay. Moving down the list, our garbage unit for our hook lift truck. The, the addition of the garbage unit we have right now is 1996 version. We have had it, we've had our mechanic working on that a lot lately. It just literally is rusting apart. And he has replaced metal inside the thing, outside the thing, but it's literally rusting apart. You can bring up the question and say, well, you know, would it be better to just have our, have our garbage hauled by a company? From what we've found, it probably isn't. The investment in a new garbage unit, which we think is going to run in that $60,000 range, is, is much more efficient for us, number one, and I think much more cost-effective over the years. And I'll give you this. We couldn't, we found out we couldn't haul Hickory Hills garbage because we were in Tama County. We found out that Tama County wanted their garbage. So we couldn't go down and take our truck down there anymore. This happened a couple of years ago. So we had to contract the garbage hauling at Hickory Hills. That's normally about seven months during the busy season. In the couple of years that we've been doing this, they've raised, the, the company's raised fees on us three times. We just got notification of another raise for this year. So the gar, to haul the garbage out of Hickory Hills this year, it will be, it's going to cost us $350 a month for about seven months. And that's going to equate to, again, I haven't done the math, but it's a couple thousand bucks over that. To haul the rest of everything else we have, Black Hawk Park, Big Woods Lake, I shouldn't throw McFarland in there. We do contract that one out too. But all the rest of what we haul, which amounts to 55 tons on the average out of the park systems, our cost is about $2,300. That's just, that's just the tonnage that we pay to solid waste when we take that truck in there. So we pay more, almost more Hickory Hills to haul their garbage than we do for all the rest of it in a year. So the garbage unit is very efficient, I think, for us. And then on the big weekends, we have the ability to go into those campgrounds and get rid of that stuff because our dumpsters fill and then it's just an unsightly mess. And we have the ability to go in there and remove that on a Saturday. And it, it's just better for people that use the park. So that one is very high on our priority list. It's just something that I think we're, we really need to replace. And we have the truck. We have a hook truck. We, we purchased those hook trucks years ago because, you know, there's lots of things we can do with them. We have a flatbed that can go on there. We have a chipper box that can go on there. We have a garbage unit that can go on there. So that truck is very versatile. And so, again.
How much garbage per year, Mike? 55 tons?
55 tons is what we hauled last year, I believe. Something like that. That's about average.
That's more than I would have ever guessed.
Yeah. Asphalt repairs in Black Hawk Park. We've got $50,000 in there for, for that. We had some money in FY '23, the year we're in right now. We had some money for some repairs in Black Hawk Park. It didn't go very far. Asphalt costs, as we all know, kind of skyrocketed compared to a couple of projects we'd had in prior years. So we didn't estimate very well. We got a couple of places fixed, but we knew we have to come back to this. We have some really bad spots. We can't let it get any worse. We're estimating $50,000. We'll take care of those. And then we're going to have to watch that road as we move forward. That road has actually held up very good from, from its original asphaltings, but we've got to keep up with it. The next two, I've got a couple of items. I've got a three-quarter ton truck and a half-ton truck. And, and I know, you know, we never put two trucks in there. But again, going backwards, we did not, we were not able to get a truck in fiscal year '22. We got bids. We took the low bid. Those people could not produce the truck that, that we had ordered. We, we kept on them, kept on them and actually moved into another fiscal year. We, we let, you know, everybody know down here that we still didn't have the trucks. We had to move the money and the whole thing. And then it came about that, oh yeah, we can get you a truck. But it was like $12,000 more than what they had bid it and we just said no. And so that truck went by the wayside and we didn't, we didn't pick one up. Fiscal year '23, we were looking for a three-quarter ton truck for our wildlife conservation people. Their work has, has really picked up due to our landowner assistance program. The truck they're driving is, is in the rotation. It's ready to be moved on. And so we were looking for a truck for them. Well, we wildly underestimated the cost of that truck. And we, we had actually purchased a three-quarter ton truck just, I think, one fiscal year prior. And we put that same amount of money in there and found out that, that we weren't even close. And I think everybody's finding that out. I'm hearing this with everybody that's walking up here. So what we ended up doing, and then on top of the, the price increase, we were simply told by the dealer that got the bid that he go, I can't get you the truck. He goes, I, I simply cannot get you the truck. So that went off the, the table too. But what we did was we turned back around again because we didn't get a half-ton truck in 2022. We used the three-quarter ton money and purchased a half-ton truck, patrol truck for the north unit. So at least we weren't three trucks behind. We could have been three, sitting here, three trucks behind and, and we aren't. So we did go ahead and use our fiscal year '23 money that would have been a three-quarter ton. We purchased a half-ton with it. So what you're seeing here is we're asking again to try to get this three-quarter ton truck purchased for our wildlife conservationists. And then the half-ton is a patrol truck that was in, basically in 2022. And all we're doing is we're staying with our cycle. We've, we've tried to not get behind and we haven't. But normally you will, you would only see one truck a year. So.
Mike is, are you able to get the trucks now?
You know, that's a really good question. And, and we're not sure that, that even if we, even if we ask for this three-quarter ton, I've been told by a couple of dealers that they're not sure that they can even get them. So I don't know, Tom.
I know we, the board's already approved other departments for the inflated prices of the trucks. So if you could get them, I'd go ahead and budget it, be done with it.
One of the things that we, that we did ask, because when we go out for bid, we get our bids back, we accept a bid, and then they have to go out and, and, you know, the truck's either not built yet or something like that. That's always the way it's been. What we're finding out is, you know, they come back 10 months later and say they can't get us the truck. So we ask, could we shop on the lots for vehicles? And we did find out that, that that was going to be okay. We kind of talked, I think, Mike, we discussed that with you. And we did find out that was okay. It may be what we have to do. We may just have to scout and see what's out there. Because placing an order for one is no guarantee that you're going to get it. Because we've already failed twice. And I think I've heard from other departments that it's happened to them too. They, they order them for you, but then no guarantee you're going to get them. So, anyway. I've got a mid-size end loader on there for Hickory Hills. Hickory Hills is currently operating with a loader tractor. It's a 210 LE John Deere. It doesn't have a lot of size to it. Al has been working with that tractor. I believe that's an early 2000 version. And he's been working with that down there. And it's his sole loader bucket tractor that he has down there. I think in some cases, we've had, he's, kind of has to overwork that tractor. It's probably not big enough for some of the things he needs to do. But again, as far as our rotation goes and what I think Al needs to be able to operate Hickory Hills, and I discussed this with him, I think one of these mid-sized loaders would be much more effective for him. There are attachments, numerous attachments that we could get down the road to put on this. Where the loader tractor he has right now just has a loader bucket on it and that's all he can do with it. But we can get grapple buckets when, for, to deal with his storm damage. We could get, that road is very bad in the winter time. There's a possibility we could get a snow blower for that unit to keep that road cleared. And so there's, by doing that, we've got a piece of equipment that's very versatile. And, and I think it, it's, it's very much upgrading what he has to work with. And so that's why we, we looked at that for Hickory Hills. So. The bison and elk handling pen, I had some pictures the other time. I didn't bring that thumb dry with me. I apologize. But you really kind of have to see this thing. Al brought this to my attention. This is, it's sort of a new system. It's been out a few years. People that are handling bison and elk and these large animals that they. People that are handling bison and elk and these large animals that they have in their displays, these catch pins are providing, uh, not only safety for the employees that are working with these animals and the veterinarians that have to work with these animals, but also it's, it's more of a safety factor for the animals themselves. They don't have the ability to thrash around and, and once they get them in these things and they can do all their work, uh, very quickly and, and move them on through. It also couples as a, as a loading chute, uh, when, whenever they want to move animals, trade animals or sell animals. Buchanan County Conservation made one of these purchases. Al did go over and take a look at that. And, um, they are, they are just thrilled with theirs based on, um, the, the ease that they work with. And again, I, I applaud Al, think, for what he does with those animals. It does take, uh, some special knowledge and, uh, to be able to, to work with these things. And he's done this all these years with nothing like this. It's, it's kind of with smoke, smoke and mirrors to, to take care of those animals, and, and he's done an amazing job. But again, um, like Al and I have talked about, he and I aren't going to be here forever. And, um, we certainly have to be ready for the next generation that's going to come in and work with these animals because those animals are incredibly popular. They draw a lot of people to Hickory Hills. And, uh, um, one of the great things about it is our animals always look healthy. They always look happy, so to speak. And, um, uh, we, we don't get complaints from the public on things like that. So, they're very well taken care of, but we have to continue that, that process. That's why we put that in there. This is, again, relatively new, and it's something that I think would be a, a great investment for the future of that park and those animals.
Did you say lifetime expectancy for something like that is?
The, the, uh, the catch pin?
Yes.
It should be, uh, it should be like a 20, 25-year investment. I mean, it really should be. It should be a long-term investment.
Super, thank you.
Yep. It's very heavily built, it's, it's a, it's quite a beast of a handling machine. We have two HVAC systems in there for Ranger residences. And, uh, again, that's pretty common sense. We've just got, uh, we've got those on a schedule too. Some of what we were, started doing 10, 12 years ago is we started replacing those HVAC systems with heat pumps. And, um, we, I, I did have a conversation with, uh, some of the HVAC companies out there because I didn't, I guess I really wasn't thinking about it. But, um, you know, you think about, uh, an HVAC system will, a lot of it lasts you 20 years, 25 years because that's what we used to get out of them, and, and maybe some people still do. But when you put these heat pumps in, you've got to realize, um, heat pumps work sometimes all 12 months out of the year. They, they run in the winter time too, you know, on the warmer days. Where the, the other HVAC systems, you had an air conditioning unit, you had a heating unit. The air conditioning unit only ran from whenever you want, it may to August, and then it was shut down for the winter. These heat pump systems, which we've been putting into these residences because they're efficient, uh, and they, and they cut down on, on, uh, electrical use, they do run a lot more throughout the year. So, I was told they wear out quicker. But I really truly believe it's like the stories of the washing machines. We all know that, you know, you don't, you don't get a washing machine for 30 years anymore either. They, they, you get about five years out of them, you better hope you can get five years. And, and it's just the way things are made anymore. And I think these HVAC systems are the same way. But we've identified a couple of residences, and we need to keep those rotations going, moving those out before they completely break down. And we have to do this in the middle of a budget with no, with nothing to replace them with. So, that's what we're trying to do there. A mower is always on our list. We replace one every year and again. It's just like the vehicles, it's a cycle, and we try to move them through. This gator is for McFarland Park. Uh, the gator that's being used down there has over 3,500 hours on it. I believe it is a 2000 and 2004 ver, 2006 version. It's obviously a great tool for the Sea Ryze Nature Trail. It's easy to hop on that trail, buzz up and down that trail and do what they need to do. So, it's used almost every day during the, the warmer seasons and, and up until snow gets on that trail for those guys to, to work that trail. So, the gator he's got is, is very much in need of replacement. So, that's why we put that on there. And the last thing we had on our list, this tractor, uh, and cab loader. It goes along with what I mentioned before. Our wildlife conservation people are starting to get, uh, a lot more requests from landowners. Back in 2015, um, the county conservation board decided to do away with our landowner assistance program. And, uh, so, they did, we reacted to it, we, we didn't do landowner assistance anymore. In 2017, we started to revisit that because, uh, pollinator programs were coming out and, uh, lots of things were going on. And as staff, we felt like, you know, we were still getting these calls, and we were saying, well, we don't do that anymore. And we felt like we were, uh, not doing a service to the, the people of Black Hawk County when, when we could be. They're coming to us because they don't have the tools to do, to, to plant their prairies. And they, or whatever they wanted to, to, to do. And we felt like we needed to get back in that business, and that's exactly kind of what's happening. We're starting to get acres and acres piled on top of us now from landowners that want to put small plots into pollinators, um, prairies, different things like that around their houses. Uh, they're taking some of their, some of their road crop in some of these situations, and they're putting them into, um, these pollinator programs. So, for instance, this spring, we're potentially sitting on about 80 acres worth of prairie that, that, uh, we may be planting if, if all goes through with these landowners. So, this is really amping itself up. The other thing we're looking at with this is, we all know that, uh, uh, part of our mission is land acquisition, land conservation, all those kinds of things. We take care of over 9,000 acres already. I mean, there's plenty of discussion out there that how much more do you want to take care of? How much more do you need to take care of? And that's a very legitimate question. But the other part about it is, you know, why do we have to own it to get out of it what we would be doing with it? If we have private landowners that want to put 30 acres of their land into prairie, which is what we would probably be doing, or we would put it into forests or something like that, if we can convince them to do that and we can help them do that, we're getting the same result. It's good for the environment, it's good for our pollinators, it's good for everything. And, and, and that's part of our mission statement. So, you can view it that way too. We don't have to own it to do something good with it as long as we get the people that want to listen. That being said, um, we are looking at a, we, we put this tractor with, with a cab in it because we don't currently have a tractor with a cab. So, our employees are sort of exposed to the elements for, at sometimes, you know, eight and 10 hours a day, we have an eight-foot drill that we plant with. If you're planting 10 acres, um, you'll never get that done in a day. So, those are long days, breathing a lot of dirt, a lot of sun, rainstorm comes along. And so, we were just looking at, uh, getting a piece of equipment that would help them out based on the increased, uh, need or want from the public as far as landowner assistance goes, so. That's our list. I'm open for questions.
Thank you for answering.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Let's go with information technology, finish up a couple of these smaller departments next.
Good morning, Al, you IT director. I have the biggest list ever for you guys, so.
Great.
Guess we'll start with. Okay, the first thing we have on our list is a plotter. This is on behalf of the auditors department. So, the previous plotter, uh, was defunct before my arrival. And previously, it was earmarked with ARPA purchases before the guidelines deemed it not qualified. So, I would just like to put that on there for, um, a request. And they've been sorely missing that, that plotter. So, and the plotter will scan as well, so it'll be great for archiving and printing. Second item is the copier for building maintenance. Same thing, it was earmarked for ARPA before the guidelines deemed it unqualified. And so, we would just like to replace that one and go from there. And lastly, um, the work vehicle, I kind of briefly talked about this before. So, this, this vehicle would be shared between multiple smaller departments to justify its use and purchase. And IT would be responsible for the maintenance. And, and then we will make sure we have, uh, budgeted for fuel and, and maintenance and things like that regarding that vehicle. And the hope is either a van or a small SUV. And then that way, all the other departments can also use it for conferences or just general travel. Any questions?
And we talked about earlier as far as consolidation of some of these items being in the IT department. I was going to say, where instead of being broken out into different departments where they were being used? Is that something we don't need to discuss today? But something when we talk about copiers, printers, all the things that people are coming to you, I think, as far as systems?
Oh, sure, um, peripherals, I mean, yeah. So, what I told the department's heads was, um, regarding like peripherals, like printers, copiers, the computers we will always cover because that, that has a five-year, uh, cycle rotation. We will always cover those. We'll always cover things like Microsoft 365 licenses. But for things like peripherals, um, I'm asking other departments to, to try to budget for that. Generally, those are also about five-year cycles too, which kind of depends on the hardware. Sometimes they, they die sooner, sometimes they last longer. Sometimes they just go out of life because of security, they're not updated again, so. And I did, I did announce that to them a little bit late, so I do apologize again for, for that when it's this close to budget time. So, we can, obviously, if there's something that's immediate, we can assist with that. But, um, moving forward, I'm, that's what I'm asking for. If we can kind of have departments kind of budget themselves for those small items. Then copiers might be a different situation because that is a bigger ticket item since generally those are $3,000 to $5,000, depending on the model.
I think cost was kind of where it started to be at.
Yeah.
Determination when it was $200 and $300 versus thousands, sure.
True, true, yeah. Most printers, yeah, they're pretty.
Especially when we're involving you in so many of the decision-making or asking for your advice and counsel.
And we absolutely will be part of the purchasing and the, and, and decision-making advice and things like that. It's just, it's really just a funding source, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll jump to treasure next.
Okay.
Probably the last page in your packets, yeah.
Linda Hensman, uh, treasure. And Al, my list is shorter than your list. But it's, it's, it's a higher dollar amount. Basically, my request, um, we've already applied for the ARPA money. So, at this point, we are waiting to see whether or not we qualify for that. It was suggested that we put this request also to be put in front of the board. We definitely need an office remodel. We are, you know, everyone's probably, I'm assuming every one of you have been through our office before. We are a very busy office, we generally have lines out the door. Would love to be able to increase the waiting area for our customers. Eventually, maybe have more safety for our staff and the customers. Would love to eventually have a door that's secured. Like I said, for safety for all of us. But in the end, just, just basically asking for an office remodel that is beneficial for not only for our staff, but for the customers as well.
And $500,000, that comes from that, I suppose, that study that we had, is that the dollar amount in court? Have we had it broken down?
Well, I think in all honesty, and this was prior to me being treasurer, but I believe at that point when they did the study, they were actually going to move our office to a different location and so on. But our budget on our own has not allowed us to have someone come in and actually tell us what our, what, what would work better for our office at this time. So, that's why we're just kind of throwing out that amount of $500,000 is just a, a 100% guesstimate at this point.
Wasn't that partially pulled off the space enhancement study though? I don't know why, that was my recollection.
It, it might have been, but like I said, that was prior to me, so.
Changing the location, I think is what she's saying.
Yeah, yes, because at that point, they were, well, we were going to be on like, I think, the last phase of that proposal initially also. By the time they moved from office to office to office to office, then eventually, but, but I know with our office having the vault and handling the most money in this building, it, it really wouldn't be feasible for us to move to a different location in this building.
So, it seemed, let's see, maybe we need some engineering costs or something done. I, I would think to get someone in to do this.
We will, we just, I think we've got that ARPA application. We're trying to figure out if, because this really does accommodate some ARPA things such as social distancing and ADA improvements as well, we wanted to get through that process.
Yeah.
And that's in progress right now.
I kind of think we might have, maybe, if, if I'm right, Mike, did we make it kind of through the first phase? I think where we answered the questions and.
Yeah, we've got the questionnaire in as far as I know. And in fact, they had, I believe, were in contact with you about some of that directly as well. So, now it's, it's a matter of kind of waiting and seeing.
They had gotten their questions answered in the, in the way that they were hoping it would be answered.
Yeah, that's what my understanding is.
That's moving us on to the next step. But yeah, it, it would definitely be nice not to have our customers elbow to elbow in there. It would be, I mean, at this point with, with where our customers stand, I mean, technically, I'm guessing we're not handicap. You know, I don't think we meet the guidelines for any of that as well. So, it would just be nice in the end if we can just come up with some type of plan to make it work for not only the staff here, but for the customers that are coming in and doing business.
So, has Baker Tilly actually contacted you or the maintenance department or anyone to talk about, I guess, that plan further?
The maintenance has not, in so far, which is Baker Tilly. It was just, it was, they had a question.
Yep.
In regards to our application. And I'd answered that question, and my response was, it was answered in the way that they were hoping it would be, and they were going to be able to move us on.
Okay.
Yep. So, I'll, I'll follow up on that and see where that's at right now. But it would seem like we would have at least an opinion on it fairly soon.
Okay, that'd be great. I just thought for the $500,000, I'm not even sure if that's enough or not enough or whatever.
And, and I'm not sure either. Like I said, I'm kind of, I'm flying blind in this and just crossing my fingers that this works.
No, I, I understand, I just meant, yeah, we just want to be realistic with that.
Just to, to mention on that, um, when we put this together, we, we met with Linda and Rita at the time. We did use the, the assessment in a way, we kind of extracted out. As you know, that, like Linda had mentioned, it originally included physically moving their area. So, we kind of looked at that cost, and we, we did make a bit of a guesstimate based off of that facility assessment, um, utilizing, you know, the whole area, utilizing their break room, incorporating that in, creating more separation. I think the $500,000 is, was, you know, it was somewhat an estimate, but I, I, I feel like, uh, based on the information from the study, uh, that overview, I think that is going to be a fairly close number, just based off of that.
Because that seemed to be the department, I think, that had the most activity and the most need for making some accommodations, so.
Yeah.
But that was great.
You know, and they've got a lot going on in there with the activity. They also have some restrooms in there that would be addressed. So, it's a, it's a pretty, uh, pretty large project.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Linda.
Yeah, I do think, you know, it's the, it's the one department where people actually have to come in to, to wait rather than the hallways, which give a little more space for, for distancing. So, it, it, the staff always does a really great job of moving you through quickly when you're in there, but, but it, but it adds up really quickly, those, those lines do. And, and I can see that being a real safety concern too someday.
Yeah, it was kind of magnified, I think, during COVID, just that much more that we saw everything. Yeah, the lines, the spacing.
We even had lines outside the building at that point with the COVID.
Disabilities.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that, for capital items, that leaves engineering.
So, I, I missed the instructions, just go through.
Or maybe just ask if they have questions. These are all things we have talked about.
Okay, I can just briefly go through each item. So, uh, let me just say that all of our items do come out of our secondary road fund. And our first item would be the single axle dump truck. And this is just a, a continuous replacement of our, of our dump trucks. We have approximately 14 dump, 14 single axle dump trucks and about 15 tandem axle dump trucks. And they, of course, get used not every day, but, you know, very, very often. They have hundreds of thousands of miles on them, hundreds of thousands of miles and hundreds of hours, thousands of hours on the trucks themselves. So, this is just part of our, our replacement of those vehicles. We are hopeful that, um, the manufacturer, we would prefer to have a Freightliner. That's what our fleet is, is fleet, is Freightliners. We are hopeful that they will resume more of a normal production schedule, and we would be able to order one in this, the remainder of this fiscal year. Or next year. A half, excuse me, half-ton pickup truck. Half, excuse me, half-ton pickup truck, that would be two of those. This is, again, part of our normal replacement of our light-duty pickups. We usually start by, with our technicians' pickup trucks that sit out, out here across from the jail, and then those go to, those would then go to our outchaps, where those guys use those not every day, but often three or four times a week, either picking up garbage or going to check their routes. So they are used in the outchaps quite a bit with those personnel. The next item would be a tractor with a boom mower, and this would replace one of our older tractors that does not have a cab. The new tractor would have a cab. It would be used by the personnel out in the districts, so our motor grader operators, when they weren't blading in the summer, they would be mowing the dishes and, mowing the shoulder, I should say. The two, the four slope of the ditch is what they mow. They would be out there mowing. We would like an enclosed cab. When they're out there constantly, you know, there's a lot of dust, then the noise from the tractor, so we would definitely like, like to get our guys in an enclosed cab. It's a safer environment, and it cuts down on the noise and the dust. We usually have one in the south half of the county and one in the north half of the county, and they're working throughout the summer. So this would be just replacing an older tractor with a newer tractor. Again, another tractor, this would be a smaller tractor. If you're familiar with, for example, the John Deere series, this would be a 5,000 series. It would also have a cab, would also be used for mowing the gravel roads as well. The first tractor would have an arm on it, I forgot to mention that. The larger tractor would have a, an arm with a mower on it. The smaller tractor would have a pull-behind mower on it. The one we would be replacing has no cab at this point. We would obviously like to replace it with a mower that has a cab for all the reasons that I just mentioned. It could also be used by our roadside biologists. We have a small drill that drills in the seeds when we are having to reseed, for example, a bridge project, or when we are replacing culverts or any type of work we're doing. We need to be in compliance with DNR permits to, for erosion control processes where we need to have seeding placed as soon as possible. So this is just a way to facilitate getting some of our larger areas seeded with a small pull-behind drill, for example, that could be used with this tractor. The next item is a John Deere excavator. We currently have an excavator, as you know. Our current excavator is a 2012. It has about 4,200 hours on it. It is, it is costing us more in repairs every year. We would like to replace it with a larger excavator for several reasons. A larger excavator would allow us to pick up pipe, larger pipe, that currently we have to use our, utilize our crane to do that with. If we're using an excavator to pick up the pipe, then our crane can be busy with working on bridges. So this would allow us greater flexibility with our staff and also our scheduling over the summer, if we were able to use an excavator to pick up large pieces of culverts and box culverts, that type of thing. Let's see. Moving on to the, the skid load, skid loader trailer. This would be a new piece of equipment for our fleet, and as I, as I mentioned before, one of the benefits of having a trailer for our skid loader is it would, again, allow us more flexibility. We currently have two skid loaders and only one trailer, and that, that trailer oftentimes gets used by the bridge crew, gets used hauling pipe, various pieces of equipment out to the bridge crew, or various pieces of equipment such as one of the skid loaders out to a site. If we had another trailer, we could be moving both of the skid loaders at the same time, for example, without having employees wait around while one got moved, and it would allow us greater flexibility with our staff, and we could be more productive with the skid loader trailer. The mulch head for the skid loader, this would be a mower that, that attaches to the front of a skid loader. It's a drum mower. It would be able to mulch, chew up large pieces of vegetation, and by that I mean, like one and a half to two-inch in diameter, smaller trees and brush. We can just go along the ditch and mow those, those larger pieces of vegetation. Again, that would help us control the vegetation.
You can't do that now, Kathy, right? You can't do that now.
Sorry.
Or how?
We currently have a mower that attaches to our skid loader, but it's, it's a, it's not a rotary drum mower. It's a mower that has a mower deck. Goes off the, again, the front of the skid loader. We've had that approximately seven or eight years. This type of mulching head for the skid loader would allow us to mulch the vegetation that we are mowing. Sometimes we'll get complaints that we are not, in the past, we've typically either mowed up vegetation with this other mower down in the ditch, and most of the time, we just leave the vegetation. So we, we get complaints that we need to pick that vegetation up. If we had a mulching mower, it would do, it would mulch it into much smaller pieces, and we, we could leave it there without it causing, for example, drainage concerns later. The mulching mower would probably take the place of this other mower, and we would probably sell the other mower.
Thank you.
Attaching to the skid loader. The next item is a, is the three-quarter ton, or yes, dump body truck. This is being requested by, for our roadside biologist, and this takes the place of the one that we requested for this fiscal year before we had the biologist, but now that the biologist is with us, he would like to start out with just one truck, and this would be a, a larger truck that would hold a series of tanks that would hold pesticides. We have budgeted this as a used vehicle, and we think that we should be able to acquire this for the $70,000. So then, to go along with that, the spray equipment, we decided to keep that separate, and that's listed as $15,000. This would be the series of tanks and the, the, the spray equipment, the sprayer itself. It would all be fitted onto this truck in order to facilitate the spraying of the vegetation. Lastly, on, or in that item would be a three-quarter ton pickup to replace our current survey truck, which has quite a bit of rust on it. It's got 160,000 miles on it. Although we do not have a surveyor, we do have a survey tech that carries quite a bit of equipment around to various job sites. We use that equipment in preliminary design, for example, quite a bit. So this would allow us to carry that equipment and the signing that goes, that's required as we set up to do that survey work. Do you have any questions about those items? Okay, and then the last item on there would be our LED upgrade at the, at the shops. As you know, about four or five years ago, we had an LED upgrade done at the Longfellow shop, and that made a significant difference in the way the, the buildings were lighted, and it also reduced our costs. We would like to do the same thing at LaPorte, Hudson and the Elk Run shops. LaPorte and Hudson shops are over 20 years old now, and it can be very dim in those shops when the vehicles are, are parked in the shops, and you're, you're trying to look at, down on the lower part of the truck, for example, in the winter to just wash it, for example. LED lighting would allow us to install a much better lighting system in all of the shops. It would be a big benefit for the employees, as well as decreasing our electricity costs over time. Any questions about that item?
No, that would get them all done, then.
Yes, then we would be complete with LED in all the shops.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to requests for staffing, and I don't know if Caitlin is online.
Michelle, I'm here.
All right.
I'm out of office today, so I'm not in my office, but I'm, I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Let me just see, the one I got saved, my desktop is the wrong version. Frustrating, this is the way this whole day is going. Um, let's see.
Yes, I see it's listed on yours as the dental hygienist is one, and it's a .75 on ours.
Yes, and we, so Health and I have some issues to work out about that because the funding, I think, I think is only in there at .75. So Caitlin and I had emailed, you and Matthew and I were emailing back and forth earlier, so we do have to figure that one out. And we also have a question about the, one of the public health worker positions.
The preparedness coordinator for us, that's a .5.
I'm going to see if I can find my other one.
Yeah, I just want to confirm again that on your capital, all those are, again, from the secondary roads fund.
Right.
Thanks.
So to help clarify, on the dental hygienist position, the intent is for that to be a full-time position. We do have two dental hygienists currently, one of which is .75 and one of which is 1.0 FTE, so I think maybe that's where our signals got crossed. But the request is for a, is for a 1.0 FTE dental hygienist.
This should match the version that I handed out, yeah. Caitlin, we'll just need to walk through the dollars for that because I, I don't know that we quite have the dollars matching your request, so we will get back to you on that.
So I covered the, the position request in my presentation. So I think everything is there in terms of what I presented, but do you want me to walk through again what you have on your, on your spreadsheet there?
More questions, or?
I don't have any questions.
No, I, I think that it was all well-justified.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then the two of you working out the numbers and having the correct numbers, it sounds like, okay. Thank you. Then we want to move through this?
So the next one you have on there is the board of supervisors, the marketing coordinator.
Anything you want to say more about this?
Um.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, more than happy to answer questions or schedule meetings or whatever with folks. I know Amanda did pull, well, there's three counties across the state that, of the larger counties, that have this position.
Sure. So I don't have a job description developed at this point, but other than one that's just basically modeling after what the Lynn County, Johnson County, and Story County have for those types of communication positions, so. But, and then there were a couple other cities that we've seen that have had this type of position as well, so.
I did see that Polk also has a position, I mean, no, that's a different beast here, but.
Yeah, it could have been. So, but what we're seeing across this type of role is supporting the different communication pieces of our programs and services throughout the county, and working with and collaborating with the individuals that already do some of this work, kind of as part of other duties as assigned, you know, throughout the different offices that we have. Heavy emphasis on the branding of Black Hawk County and the kind of promotion and awareness and content creation to meet our different audiences. We have a wide range of offices and needs and, and audiences, and as you heard, some people, department heads, elected officials, either email or speak on behalf of this position. I can speak on behalf of it when it comes to that reach for applicants and the type of content that we can post and share to drive more traffic towards our website, as well as internal communication when it comes to different program services that we're offering, whether that's training, whether that's something like the IPR's visit, whether that's CPR training, safety training, things like that, or even just, you know, awareness of, I know Cherry did one for financial well-being. January was kind of that financial well-being month, so she kind of utilized some of the resources we have there. And, and I think from the other departments, if anybody has anything to add to this, some of you may have already heard from them, but that's kind of the focus of this, and just elevating our presence internally and externally when it comes to kind of our communications and, and media platforms, so.
I think one of the important things that I'd like to, to highlight for a position like this is, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there in the world that we have to deal with, and that especially becomes really critical in the, in the times of crisis. And if there's one thing that we've learned the last couple of years, you know, we don't know what those possible crises can be, but we know that all the misinformation is going to be on social media. And so without us having, you know, a credible, you know, presence in those places, then, then we don't have, you know, the, that already established credible voice out there for people to get clear and accurate information when they most need it. And it's really hard to invent that kind of thing, you know, when they're, you're in the middle of a crisis. And so that's, that's one thing I think about, too, is just the importance of our ability to effectively reach the public with information that they need to have when it comes down to those situations. Because right now, you know, you look at our, like, our official social media, you know, page, which we didn't have until I, until I started, my help that's created, you know, it just has not grown because we have not had, you know, a dedicated staff or strategy, you know, behind that. And so, you know, until we do that, it's, you know, you can put something out there, but it's not going to reach very many people, and so we've got, until we really build it into that kind of credible, you know, source of information in our community.
I think I would add to that, that we've got departments doing what they can now. That tends to be the stuff that's sort of quick action, and I think this position helps, you know, really get into that long-term strategy, those communication strategies that help improve reach, and frankly, help tell the story of the incredible work that our staff does and the services that are, that are available to our public, so.
Okay. Can I speak in favor of that as well? We, right now, we have a minimal Twitter. We, we try and get information out every day as needed for the road conditions. I'm sure we could benefit from this position, helping us get some of that information out and being more proactive on other areas throughout the year. But definitely in the wintertime, we, we try to have a presence on social media, and I just think this, this position would be very helpful to us in that respect.
Thank you.
Grant, we got your email.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I did send an email, and, and I talked to supervisor a little about it yesterday, and he brought up the fact that some departments are going to be very wary about what information goes out with their department, and I think that's definitely something that has to be considered, and that you would need to have close cooperation between this position and those departments that have very vital information that you don't want misinformation or confusion on. But, but I think that it is quite possible to work closely and achieve that, and hopefully we can get information about how that's done in other counties. And hopefully we can get information about how that's done in other counties. Uh, but just in, in the case of, of our office's situation, especially with the elections. I tend to get information out around election time. And, uh, it, we don't have a consistent message throughout the year. It's something that we've discussed, but we just don't have the staff to handle that. And then when it does come to election day, for instance, I'm trying to get out vital information. Uh, when I'm very, um, crunched with a lot of things to do and it's always kind of stressful trying to make sure that I, what I get out is accurate when I've got a lot of other things on my mind. And it would be very helpful to have somebody, uh, who's, uh, less stressed by the situation, uh, working hand in hand.
Thank you. Well, I know you've offered to speak more, we asked to meet more on it too. I said, one of my questions, I thought, when we were, since this is a new area for us, and not that there isn't a lot of need for it, was, um, when we were talking about positions earlier, had we considered or, um, whether it would be contracting with someone to do it just to see what it is we really need, only because we're kind of stepping into a pool where we said there's a lot of different departments doing a variety of things and how that would work. But that was just an option.
Yeah, I, I, I think that the issue, I think the issue there with, with doing it contracts, is you, you lose sort of the continuity. Um, there is the, it is important for this, this position and this, this person, this hire to establish relationships with department heads so that we don't get out in front of our skis. Specifically about, there's some communication, communication that, that we shouldn't, we, it's not, the timing isn't right sometimes to, to move forward. And so, um, I think that, I think there's real value. Part of their job will be, you know, to, to initially, to analyze what footprint we currently have. And then to create that strategy, um, moving forward. That strategy is still going to require implementation. So even if we were to hire a consultant to come in, do the audit ish of our social media presence, um, you know, ways to, to further implement. The result is going to be hiring somebody to implement that strategy, I think.
Well, and even that strategy, could we not contract with someone to do that, I think, with the relationship before we actually put someone on the payroll and said, this is, this works for us and this is what we want to go do. Uh, just, just a thought, just throwing it out there that a contracted person that would be here and that we would do something like that similar to see how it would work.
I think the other value though of, of, of hiring a person is, is with a contract, you are one of multiple clients. And so you, you, you lose, um, that person's frankly attention, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then they've, they've just got more balls in the air to, to juggle. But it's certainly something I guess to con, to consider.
It was just, and, and learning more about other counties and what they've done, I think that would be helpful, I think, just from that perspective to me to know more information about that. So I just meant though, looking at it was like, okay. Before we jumped into this and put a person on and found out how we really wanted it to work. Maybe redo it that way. Yolando, please.
So Yolando Lovelace, Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. Not to beat a dead horse, but I, I'm, I'm in, um, conjunction with this position and I wanted to look at it at another level. Kind of explained it to the, uh, department heads yesterday. Uh, but Yolando is a reflection of the county. My position, my job, and everything that, uh, so as a direct reflection of the county, our social media page is a direction, reflection of the county. So when there's a concern from a, a veteran that's on our social media page, who addresses that concern? And so this position could be one that would do that. If there's a complaint about uh, our jobs, depending on what department it is, who is the quality assurance person that addresses that question? So that person on the other end that's making the complaint is not getting the, the results from Yolando, but getting a result from someone within the county that's going to say, hey, I'm going to look into that and we'll get back to you. Because, you know, I had that discussion with my staff. If, if there's a complaint on social media about our office, and I'm only using our office, right? If I re, if I, um, go back out to that person, that becomes a tit for tat because I'm defending the office. But it's not providing the quality that that customer is looking for. And so I see that position that, uh, Tavis is, is bringing up as something that will safeguard the county in, in not allowing us to get into tit-tat conversations with our customers when someone else could address that concern. That's just something I just wanted to bring up.
Oh, thank you.
Hello, I just wanted to also express my support for this position. So I kind of see this position in comparison to IT. Our motto is to never be reactive and always be proactive. And then I kind of feel that this position would help us get to that, uh, that position. Um, it would be nice to have a person dedicated to, to grow our social media presence, to engage with the citizens and staff. Especially with our website, I think our website, you know, I'll be honest, we, we, we need to do a better job of updating content on our, on our website in general. And I think this person would be great at, at doing that, so. But sorry not to beat a dead horse and just
No.
show my support, so, yep.
Look at it as beating a dead horse, but that's okay. No, we need to hear from people. No, that's great. Are you ready to move on?
Yeah.
Mike, do you want to?
Okay, um, Conservation did ask for an FTE and I won't go through that long-winded story I gave you the other time, so relax. But really, it, it, it comes down to some very common sense things. Um, again, back in 2017, I think we, we, Conservation understood that our programs weren't going anywhere. And call it stagnation, call it being antiquated, I don't know what that was, but we weren't, we weren't moving. We stepped in, we decided we, something's got to change. And so we, we basically, we reorganized our system and, and, you know, through, with our, how we related with our friends group. And I came to this board with two major asks. And the first was to accept the positions that the friends were funding because it was not sustainable anymore. And you granted us that, and that was step number one. Step number two came about a year later when, um, uh, a nature center our size had one naturalist, I asked for that second naturalist, and you gave us that second naturalist. And at the time, I told you, I said, you know, eh, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that, that position is going to pay for itself because it won't. But I do feel like that if this goes the way we think it's going to go, and we have all the right people in all the right places, our program's going to grow and it's going to expand. And it's going to be something that, uh, people, you know, people at Cedar Valley are going to want, and they're going to come after. And it's exactly what it's done. And I think our revenue alone, uh, which we, we would put programming revenue at $25,000, we could never make that goal. We, we just could never make that goal. But once these two items were put into place and a little bit of time went by, all of a sudden, before we knew it, in fiscal year 19, we hit that revenue line item. We increased it to, uh, in 20, 21, and in fiscal year 22, that $25,000 revenue that, that we couldn't reach a couple of years ago, hit $58,000, almost $59,000, just in programming. We now want to undertake School of the Wild, which is a, which is a huge thing, which is a big thing. It's an opportunity that, that Black Hawk County Conservation should not bypass because it's laying on the table for us, it's whether we grab it and run with it. And our staff wants to grab it and run with it, and we're going to. You throw that into what we're already doing, and our revenue projections for this fiscal year 24 are around $71,000. So from 2019, um, we have increased revenue leaps and bounds. Um, but we also recognize the fact that as that, as those numbers went up and as the participation from people went up, we started to get waiting lists. Our programs filled immediately. There were people on waiting lists that, that never got the opportunity to do our summer programs, our summer camps, our field trips, those kinds of things. We were, we were offering everything that we possibly could. We would love to have offered more to grab these people up and get them, get them what they were asking for. But there's only so much time and there's only so many people. And so it's really pretty simple. We feel like we've reached, uh, the saturation point with what we have. And our program is, is still going crazy. And that's why I'm standing here, that's why I'm asking for that. And, um, so that's where we are. It's, 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 it's really good news. I know sometimes we, we walk up here and I, I know when staff came to me and said, you know, last summer, they talked about, you know, I, we, we just, it looks like we need another FTE, and I'm kind of like, ugh. It's, it's, these are hard things to bring to the table. Um, and, and I understand that, and I understand the commitment that, that we're asking all of you to make. But, uh, in the end, um, you know, it's, uh, it's really good news, uh, one way or the other. Whether we get it or whether we don't, it's good news because our programs are amazing. And, and they're growing in leaps and bounds. So we just want to serve everybody that wants to come and, and partake.
And you've had input from, uh, the schools?
Yep, yep, we actually have, and, and that brings up a good point, Dan. You know, we, uh, we, we deal with Waterloo schools, we deal with Cedar Falls schools, we deal with every school in Black Hawk County. We also, we also are providing programming for 13 schools outside of Black Hawk County. And, uh, I'll give you one example, Dyke New Hartford, uh, during, uh, annually, we serve 224 of their kids, three different field trips that we do for them. They have bought into this and they, and they just keep coming back. And again, 13 other schools outside of Black Hawk County were, were currently serving, so. That's how, and again, it kind of, you, you kind of take a look at some of the, you know, if those things aren't offered somewhere else, they'll come here.
And that's gen, that's part of, that's part of what's generating revenue for the program.
Absolutely, yep.
Oh, I said it last time, but I'll say it again, just the, it's, it's obvious, the increase of the quality of programming that's been offered, um, for people of all ages. Like I see people I know, um, sharing events that they're going to out at, at Hartman. Um, I see things that you do, and I'm like, oh, I'd be interested in that one. You know, and so it's, it, it really is good, and that's one of the important things that we can do as a county to continue to improve the quality of life in this community, which is so critical, um, for our workforce needs and everything to attract and retrain, um, young employees, is to continue to invest in these, these quality of life measures and that. For more and more people, that is more about having, you know, fun and interesting things to go do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next page, um, is more restructuring things than additional positions. We've got IT up there first, at least we will, when I get to the right page. And I see that my formula didn't work, so it's a net add of 0.5, not one, right there, under information technology.
Um, yes, this is the, uh, in conjunction with public health, where we're kind of splitting one, uh, one FTE. So should pretty much be a wash. Any, any questions regarding that?
No. All right, thank you. Okay, Brian Williams, county attorney, next.
So we discussed this a little bit, we could go Tuesday. Um, we're moving to, uh, part-time vacant positions, creating an additional, uh, full-time victim witness coordinator. Put us in line with most of the counties, majority of the counties that have more than one. Uh, the one I have now is partially grant-funded. I think we'll find additional, uh, grants with, if I'm allowed to have another one.
With a net, this additional cost of 11, 255.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So ahead of the meeting, I did provide, um, about two minutes before the meeting, the job descriptions for the restructuring, so I'm just. Thank you. So, um, I'm here to really answer questions, concerns about the restructuring. Um, I'd covered this at length, um, during my budget session. But, uh, with the generalist role, this is not a new role, um, the basic generalist two, um, or, I'm sorry, generalist one, or just generalist role. Um, that's something that we've had in the past. We've had two generalists, um, in before, or before. Um, I'm hoping to have, uh, this kind of career progression with the generalist and then the senior generalist. And, uh, then with the director being oversight for both those positions. Um, I covered last time that the current specialist, uh, the way things are set up right now, they're very designated to certain functional areas of our office. And I'd like them to be more aligned under, um, all areas and split their work according to different departments. So one generalist would support, um, a certain set of departments and the other would support the other, the remaining departments. Um, I do have on here distinguishing features for the generalist two, that it is distinguished from the HR generalist one in that it involves independently performing complex HR projects in a wide variety of areas. May involve leading HR initiatives and acting on behalf of the director. However, doesn't involve full supervisory duties and responsibilities. So, just here to answer any questions about, um, about this restructuring. And we also then have that part-time intern position as well. Just to assist with more special projects and having that partnership established, uh, ideally with one of the colleges here, um, local colleges, um, to be able to, uh, utilize their pool of students, uh, that have, uh, different ideas or um, can bring, you know, uh, different perspectives that align to their studies and can meet our needs. And, um, that could be in organizational behavior, could be in, um, wellness, wellbeing, could be in specifically in, in HR as well.
Are any of those in, uh, through the local, through you and I, or?
Sure.
Hawkeye, um, or Warburg, I guess. Are any of those students required from an hours perspective to do an internship?
So I believe some studies do require an internship. When I attended you and I for my business degree, there wasn't the requirement, that did change though. Um, so, uh, and I believe in some of the education and in public health, uh, there are certain requirements. I know, similar to maybe social work, so. But I wouldn't say a blank, I don't think all of them out of those, um, different areas require that, so.
I, I do know that I'm hiring, we've hired an intern, uh, this summer at work, and they are, they were explicitly told, you can, you can field an unpaid internship, but they were encouraged to negotiate, uh, for a paid internship. And frankly, the, the internships that get filled are the ones that are paid internships. And you're going to get frankly more quality work, um, uh, from that paid internship, so. But even if it is a requirement for hours, I do think there is value in making.
It's not coming up there. You did ask me about last year's, well, I, I brought this year's capital. But right now, it's not coming up in Zoom, so let's see. I think I have to. Maybe. Let me take you off just for a minute. For heaven's sake. Oh, I'll get it, I'll have to get it to you later. I don't know why that doesn't want to cooperate right now. I will, I'll provide that. Like, it's a very unusual situation because in 2023, the capital was really very low because there were, at the time that budget was developed, it was assumed that ARPA could be used for almost anything. So it, it is not a very apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay.
And we are still working on developing more of a five-year plan. I, I need to, for, to figure all these pieces out of the puzzle, I really need the five-year picture to figure out if there are pieces that can move around or how best to do what we need to do.
That, I'll, I'll admit, my, my thought process, at least initially, is if we've got departments asking for capital projects and they rolled over dollars in the most recent completed fiscal year, it would seem like we've already budgeted, we've, we've already budgeted and we've taxed folks for those, for those departments, it would sort of make sense to me to.
Yeah, we, so, um, as, when we closed out the audit this year, we kept hearing that conversation come up, right? conversation come up, right? So Billy and I did go through the budgets and we really didn't find very much in the '22 year that wasn't spent. Now, maybe they didn't spend it on what they planned to spend it on or something like that. I think that amount was like, was like $23,000. So we did not pursue booking that as a signed fund balance. That may be different for fiscal '23 because I think some of those purchasing delays are really going to come into play in '23. But yes.
But we won't have that.
I have a plan in place that we will, we will be able to address that and roll those over. We're, I think, my goal is that capital expenses, even equipment, you will not see in most of the operating budgets going forward. We will move those to a capital fund. That way, that budget stays there until it's spent and it doesn't affect our general fund, fund balance that we're looking at. So I, I think it'll be a lot cleaner for the departments and for the board to see, to follow through what choices were made. And then if there's a purchasing delay for two years, it won't matter because that money is sitting in a designated spot to be used.
But were you going to be able to have those numbers for, during this budget cycle? I think. I know we talked about different things to look at, whether it was general reserves or whatever, those types of things, as well as this kind of questions you're asking. Will that impact this year's budget and will you have those available to make those evaluations?
Well, the only thing I, I mean, since fiscal '23 isn't done yet, I don't know for sure what equipment might come in yet. So I don't, the '22 things, I think we're pretty good on. There was, I, I believe I've straightened this out with the departments. We haven't done a formal budget amendment. There were, there was a transfer made to put capital in a capital fund. So the revenue did get moved from the general fund to the capital fund. Somehow, the other side of that, to allow someone to spend that money, did not get done. But it, the revenue's sitting there. I don't, you know, I guess as the board members, if you would have a problem with that, you would need to tell me. But I would assume when we do a budget hearing, that's not going to be an issue because we've set aside the money to do that for whenever we do it.
Okay. Does that answer your question, too?
It does.
As well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else you want to cover for today's budget session?
I think that was enough for today.
Yeah.
A lot. I thought it was going to be short. I was wrong.
No, no. Yeah, not at all, not those topics. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, great. Well, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's second.
It's been moved in second at all. In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.